Good evening and welcome to this March 15th meeting of the Paducah Planning and Zoning Commission. We welcome all of you who are joining us via Zoom tonight, and we ask you to join us as we say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Summer, would you call the roll, please?
Ben Berry, Mr. Bradford, Mr. Morrison.
Here.
Ms. Pollard.
Here.
Ms. Shranki.
Here.
Wade.
Present.
Chair Crissius.
Here. Mr. Morrison, you have the minutes motion, please.
Yes, ma'am. I move that the reading of the minutes for February 15th, 2021 be waived, and that the minutes of said meeting, as prepared by staff, be approved as written.
Second.
Second by Pollard. Are there any corrections or comments? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Morrison.
Aye.
Commissioner Pollard.
Aye.
Commissioner Shranki.
Aye.
Commissioner Wade.
Aye.
Chair Crissius.
Aye. Mr. Wade, you have our first item of business tonight, a text amendment to mobile food vehicles.
I move this commission adopt a resolution recommending to the Board of Commissioners that case text 2021-029 pertaining to the text amendment of section 126-87, mobile food vehicles of the Paducah zoning ordinance be adopted.
Second. Second by Pollard.
This is a proposed text amendment being introduced by the city of Paducah. Back in about 2017 is whenever mobile food vehicles was adopted as part of the zoning ordinance. Since that time, we've had a few items that have came up that needed to be clarified. One of the major things that we have put before you for consideration is that mobile food vehicles have always been intended to be standalone on a lot by themselves within the confines of the zoning ordinance. However, if they're covered by a special event permit by parks, such as barbecue on the river, or quilt week, or something like that, they don't fall underneath this ordinance. And neither do food trucks that are meant to be standalone, such as a food truck court or something to that effect. So we've asked for clarification on that. Further, there's a few items like temperature controls, insect screens that fall under the McCracken County Health Department, or rather, the Purchase District Health Department, and also the Fire Prevention Department, that whenever they have regulations changed, we would have to update our ordinance every single time. By taking that out and referencing those entities, our ordinance will always be up to date with the food truck regulations. The residential dwelling unit that's contained within the ordinance now, when we say residence, as it's stated in the ordinance presently, that conveys more of a meaning of single family, where the intent is to stay 100 feet away from single family, two-family, and multifamily. So that's been changed to residential dwelling. And also to allow food trucks on Broadway, particularly between 7th Street and Water Street. As of right now, there's not enough 220 volt plugs along that section of Broadway to accommodate mobile food vehicles where they don't have to use their generators. In the past, over the last three or four years, mobile food vehicles that have used that section of Broadway have used generators under special permitted events like barbecue on the river, and staff discussed, and that has not been overly obnoxious or anything like that. So we hope that we can use this to upgrade infrastructure, but it's lack of infrastructure why we're requesting this change. And the rest of the proposed text amendment is cleanup verbiage, capitalization, punctuation, things like that. So I would be glad to answer any questions that you all make.
Josh, excuse me, I do have a question. When you refer to residential, does that mean second story also? I mean, what, can they park on Broadway in front of a business that has a second-story residence?
That, that is the intent, yes.
Let me ask something along those lines, too. Originally, then, especially the Broadway, was the thinking that the generators would be too loud?
That was the thinking back, back in 2017.
And I know you haven't had any responses from the public that you know of, but you know, what happens if we start getting a lot of responses? Can we change this back?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
These text amendments can come from three different sources. One is property owners, two is the planning commission itself, and three is the Board of Commissioners. And that's my statement.
Thank you.
Let me expand on that question I just asked. I asked about if there were businesses on the first floor and residents on the second. What if it's a totally residential, like the condos on Second Street? Can a truck park in front of them?
As written, yes, that may need to be something to take into consideration. But along Broadway, in the B2T zone, we specifically allow only commercial uses on the first floor to where no residential is allowed on the first, on the ground floor on Broadway.
I, I think that's not accurate, Josh. I know of a particular residence on Broadway that is not a business.
That text amendment came along in 2018, 2019, so there may have been some that had already existed on the ground floor along Broadway. But that was changed within the last few years to keep that from reoccurring.
Picturing food trucks on Second Street with across the street food trucks on the parking lot seems a little excessive to me, and those are residential. So this doesn't, this does prohibit that, I mean, this does allow that to happen? Food trucks on Second Street and food trucks on the parking lot?
As written, yes, it would.
Well, doesn't it say that they shall not, generators will not be permitted within 100 feet of a residential dwelling?
Right.
So if they've got a generator, they're not, they can't be within 100 feet, whether it's first story or second story dwelling, correct? It's on page four at the top.
I, I am glad that you all pointed that out, because that, as written, Commissioner Pollard is correct. If there are second-story dwellings, I'm not sure how many buildings along Broadway or Second have second-story dwellings.
A lot. A lot. Just about every one between Second and Third. Yeah. Yeah, I've got a real problem with the Second Street issue, and you know, them being able to park on the street with the fact that during barbecue on the river and everything else, we have them on the parking lot. And with or without generators, I just don't think that's where they should be. It's residential, it's totally residential, it's not business.
Well, there is a, there is a restaurant on the corner of Second Street, and there is a law office on the other corner, so it's not 100% residential on Second Street. And then on the other way, going towards Kentucky, it's predominantly businesses with residential on the second floor.
So it's mixed, so yeah, so I don't think it's real clear. I don't know.
Well, it just says, "Generators shall not be permitted within 100 feet of a residential dwelling." It doesn't specify first, second floor, or whatever, it just says within 100 feet.
But that's generators, but what about a truck without a generator? It can park there.
And that's not, I don't know that that's a change, so it's not in red.
No, that would be the same.
Okay, thank you.
It would be the same, a truck without a generator?
Yes, that's correct.
So they, therefore, they couldn't park within 100 feet of a residential. But that's upstairs, too, and Broadway is totally residential between Second and Third. I don't know, I think that really needs to be clarified, Josh. I just, I don't think that's something I can go for at this point.
Okay. Since the... Here's what I would like to ask the planning commission. For subsection C, which pertains to the mobile food vehicles intended to be stationary within the mobile food courts or under the permits, that part of the ordinance change is being requested by the City Manager's Office. So if we could perhaps approve this part of the proposed text amendment with a follow-up to the generate, not change that right now, leave, take that part completely out, and not change anything on Broadway at all, and let, and let me revisit that in a different text amendment.
Tell me exactly what part you're asking us to approve.
It's the very first part, subsection C exemptions. This section shall not apply to ice cream or coffee trucks moving from place to place and are stationary in the same location for no more than 10 minutes at a time. This section also does not apply to food vending push carts or food stands, mobile food vehicles in operation under a special event permit, and mobile food vehicles intended to be stationary, such as, but not limited to, a mobile food vehicle court. We do have a a, perhaps a proposal for a mobile food vehicle court in the Highway Business District Zone that the petitioner has been talking to G-PED, the Chamber, stuff like that. So my direction was to push that part along, especially when, whenever we get into changing ordinances and things like that, I try to make one fell swoop, make sure we include everything. But the part about Broadway, I would be more than happy to revisit that in a different text amendment.
And Second Street.
How time-sensitive is the food vehicle court issue?
Sooner rather than later.
That's what I thought. Now, the Highway Business District that you're talking about, can you tell us where that would be and how close that is to, let's say, residential areas? I'm, I'm trying to picture where this would be.
The specific lot would have to undergo an annexation, but it's right beside BB&amp;T.
Olivet Church Road and...
And it's right...
Where is it? I'm not clear on that.
Olivet Church Road and US 60.
Yes, right beside BB&amp;T Bank.
Would it be between Olivet Church Road and BB&amp;T, or would it be, okay?
Right on the corner.
Not on the other side, not on the Chick-fil-A side. There isn't any room up there anyway.
Correct.
But I'm just, so, but the, but it says you cannot put your food truck within 100 feet of a residential dwelling. It doesn't, I mean, if there's a spot on Broadway where there's not a residential, is there a problem with them being there? I mean, short of going and saying who lives where, just leaving it generic as far as the 100 feet for me works, but...
I think if I'm understanding it right, they want to be able to park anywhere on Broadway, whether there's residential or not.
No, it says that they cannot park there if they're within 100 feet of a residential dwelling. Am I wrong in that, Josh?
No, you, you are correct.
Okay.
But how are you defining residential? Is it second?
How do we define residential, Josh?
If somebody is living there within the confines of the dwelling unit.
Second floor? Well, that would include second floor, wouldn't it?
It doesn't say second floor, does it?
No, it does not.
It just says somebody's living there. I, I mean, I didn't think the residential dwelling was that specific. I just thought it meant somebody living there, no matter what floor. They could be living on the third floor and not the first and second, and they still...
Yeah, and in fact, you could get more sound on the second or third floor from a generator than you could on the first.
Because it travels, you could.
Eventually, so...
So it just says cannot, shall not be there within 100 feet of a residential dwelling.
Right.
That's going to eliminate a lot of Broadway, actually.
But if they find a spot, are we going to say they can't do it?
I wouldn't.
Well, that's kind of where we're heading if we don't approve this, is kind of my take on it.
I guess my question is, I, I agree with you. My question is, how many spaces are there going to be if you stop and think about all the dwellings that are on the, above the first floor that are on Broadway?
Okay, but is that our job to worry about how many spaces there are? To me, this just says if they find a spot that's not within 100 feet, then they can sit there. If they can't, then they can't. I, I'm, I mean, I don't understand how it's our job that we have to find out if there is a spot there for them.
I think that falls on you, Josh.
I would tend to agree with Commissioner Morrison.
Is that our responsibility, or is that, are we?
Our responsibility.
Well, once an ordinance is, is passed, and particularly the, within the confines of the zoning ordinance, the enforcement branch of that is fire prevention, specifically their branch that deals with code enforcement. And it's not just the zoning ordinance, they also do nuisance cars and weeds and grass and stuff like that.
Which is very difficult to have code enforcement with limited staff. So I know that a lot of things, it's very difficult with code enforcement. So I would hate to put more on code enforcement. I would rather have this be very clear, to where we wouldn't have to go to code enforcement. I think it needs some more, I, I think it's not clear enough for me yet.
What is our, I mean, do we call for the vote? What do we do, Josh?
No, I mean, here's what I would do. I would entertain a motion, if there's someone who wants to make a motion to approve section 126-87C, and leave the rest for a different time, we could do that. But if we're going to do that, we have to do that now.
I make a motion that we take a vote on 126-87C to approve as presented.
Wait a second. What you need to do is amend the original motion. We have an original motion that is second to the table. So your motion would need to be to amend the motion of the floor.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. That is my motion, to amend it and to only address section C, which includes exemptions at this point.
Second.
Second from Ben Berry.
Now, we would need a vote on the amendment, and then another vote for the motion.
Correct, I know, but I'm just wanting, first, let's see if there's anybody else has any other things that they want to talk about. Mr. Ben Berry just joined us, so he may have some questions. Do you have any questions, Mr. Ben Berry?
Oh, ma'am, thank you.
Oh, ma'am, thank you.
All right then, let's vote on the amendment. Currently, we're voting to amend the original motion. To include only section one twenty-six dash eighty-seven C. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Shramky?
Aye.
Commissioner Wade?
Aye.
Commissioner Ben Berry?
Aye.
Commissioner Morrison?
Aye.
Commissioner Pollard?
Aye.
Chair Crisillas?
Aye.
Now, we've amended the motion. Now, we're voting on the new motion, the amended motion. And that would be to approve only section one twenty-six eighty-seven C. Are there any questions? Does anybody have any comments before we vote? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Wade?
Aye.
Commissioner Ben Berry?
Aye.
Commissioner Morrison?
Aye.
Commissioner Pollard?
Aye.
Commissioner Shramky?
Aye.
Chair Crisillas?
Aye. Thank you. Ms. Shramky, you have our next item of business, which is a zoning text amendment to historical zones H one and H two.
I do, thank you. I move that this commission adopt a resolution recommending to the Board of Commissioners the case. T X T two zero two one dash zero three zero. Pertaining to the text amendment of section one two six dash one one five. Historical zones, H one and H two of the Paducah zoning ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Second by Morrison?
Yes. Thank you all. This is another proposed text amendment, uh, from the city of Duca that originated. With, uh, city leadership. The, um. Major change within the H one and H two zone. Well, specifically for the H one first is to remove screening requirements as it's in the downtown core and screening is not required. For the H two zone, which is, uh, more well-known as Lower Town, is to reintroduce multifamily dwellings. They were originally principally permitted until up about two thousand and nine, whenever the Board of Commissioners chose to. Uh, remove that verbiage from the zoning ordinance. What this text amendment would do was, would be to reintroduce multifamily, but as a conditional use. To where it would first come to the Planning Commission for a recommendation, in this case to the Hark, Historic Architecture Review Commission. One of the convites that staff has put inside of this to protect the neighborhood is not to allow single family. Or two-family to be further subdivided into smaller apartment units, regardless of lot size. And the intent behind that is to protect our housing stock and historic structures if they're more than fifty years old. Also, under subsection C three. There are some standalone items that needed to be, uh, revised. As far as the findings that the Hark has to make for historical integrity. Items four and six was juxtaposed to three and five. And those are now standalone items as they should be. And subsection I, informal discussion regarding a certificate of appropriateness. As written, our zoning ordinance mandates two meetings before the Hark, one an informal and then a formal. The petitioners to the Hark have always had an opportunity to come before them and speak prior to being placed on the agenda. And that happens under other business. And that typically happens whenever someone is proposing a new material or an addition. Or if they need to get the Hark's thoughts on a petition before they actually submit it. And that's happened several times over the years. So what this proposed text amendment would do would be to, uh, remove that to where. Petitioners can still come to the Hark if they wish for an informal meeting. But take away that requirement in order to save time and money for petitioners. That already meet the, uh, Hark Advisory Design Guidelines. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Are there any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Shramky?
Aye.
Commissioner Wade?
Aye.
Commissioner Ben Berry?
Aye.
Commissioner Morrison?
Aye.
Commissioner Pollard?
Aye.
Chair Crisillas?
Aye. Ms. Pollard, you have our last item of business, please.
I move that this commission recommend to the Board of Adjustment case U S E. Two zero two one dash zero three two pertaining to two, two zero one one, South Twenty-Eighth Street for a condition, conditional use be approved.
Second.
Second by Shramky?
This is a petition for a recommendation for the Board of Adjustment. It'll meet the last Monday of the month. Mr. Davis is with us on the Zoom tonight. What his petition is for is to operate a personal training business out of his garage. For a maximum of twelve people a day, but no more than two people at a time. He is proposing to have a fifteen-minute gap between, uh, customers so that the driveway remains clear. And the hours of operation are proposed to be between seven AM to nine PM, which is in the confines of the noise ordinance. Uh, Mr. Davis, if you have anything else to add, or, uh, if the Planning Commission has any questions for Mr. Davis, he is with us tonight.
Mr. Davis, I have. I have a question for you. How close are your neighbors? And how much noise will you generate? Will you be playing a lot of music? Will you be doing like? I don't, I don't know what kind of personal training you're going to do.
Um, I'm more weightlifter. I train people to pretty much do weights, but really, for the most part, I also do calisthenics, um, resistive band training. Um, it's really just for either very, like beginners. Or like just older people just trying to stay healthy. Or young weightlifters just trying to learn to get stronger, learn the basic fundamentals of the weight. My neighbors, I can kind of show you on the video, man. How close they are to me. That's one driveway, and then the next driveway to me is right here on the. gravel road, little gravel driveway right here. Far as music wise, I do play music, but I don't have like a big, I have a little ten dollar speaker from Walmart. When my garage door's shut and my fiance is drilling, she can't even hear me listening to the music.
I have a question. When you say your garage door is shut, uh, what type of ventilation do you have? Do you have heat and air, or how does that work?
Oh, ma'am, not right now. I just moved to this house. I, the, it's not even insulated. I kind of have, like, when I knock out in the winter, I have two space heaters in there. It keeps the garage pretty warm. And before it gets hot here soon, if y'all do approve me doing this, then I'm planning on going to get a shop. And then I'm also about to start working on it, like in the. Garage, and I'm wanting to eventually put central heating and air in it.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand you. But there will be air before the hot weather?
Um, yes, ma'am. I'm gonna, if I approve, before I start training people, I'm gonna get one of the big shop fans to keep it there. Um, me and my buddy are working out right now. But as you can see in my garage, it's not humongous. But i- if I put a shop fan like right here, then it would keep the entire garage cool enough for us to work out.
Well, that would be with the garage door open, right? Or closed as well?
Put the garage door open.
Where you're at, do they allow parking on the, uh, the main street there?
Uh, no, sir. My driveway.
None whatsoever, okay.
Right, my, my driveway can fit six cars, so I'll never have more than four cars here at a time. Which would include my truck, my fiance's car, and then if I have two clients that train together, then there are two cars behind ours. But I'd never have no more than two people here. So I'd never have an issue with somebody not having a parking space.
And the type of business you are, uh, because it involves health and it can, uh, could involve possibly injury, what type of insurance do you cover on this?
I don't know the exact insurance. I went through it. I contacted insurance company in Paducah that like reaches out to other insurances to help people find the insurance they need. And they. They, uh. Contacted the insurance and let me know, and they found me one. It's gonna cost me eighty-two dollars front. It's forty dollars a month after that, and it covers up to a million dollars in liability insurance.
And are you, are you purchasing the home?
Yes, sir. I own the home. We did, uh, we, um, got a loan through Supreme Lending, which for now we're with home lending, but we mortgaged the house.
Thank you for sharing all that. That's. Great to have you on here. It makes it a lot easier.
Yes, sir.
Are there any other questions or comments? I, my comment would be, I would feel a lot better if. The ventilation, the heat, the air was already installed. I have a problem with this being approved before that. Is completed. I guess I'm just concerned about people's health or. Something, but, uh, Josh, uh, would that have not been part of?
I've contacted the, the inspector, like the people that you talk to, they have to come out and inspect the house through the fire department. And seeing if there was any requirements. They told me there's no requirements for the house because it's pretty much just like a guest being here.
Josh, are you with us on this? Uh, would that not have been part of? Approving the application or, or presenting the application?
Ma'am?
Is Josh with us?
Yeah. Oh, Mr. Davis, just one second. Other Josh. Since fire prevention has went out and looked at it, there wasn't any further comments that we had since it was going to be within the auspices of that. However, uh, in the recommendation to the Board of Adjustment, the Planning Commission is. Free to make any, um, recommendations to attach to that that they would like as far as heating and air and what else it may be.
I, I just don't think there's proper ventilation with the door closed and.
No, ma'am. The only time I have that I'm gonna be training with the door closed is in the, in the winter. And that's just so the heat that's in there stays in. In the summer, the garage door will be open with the shop fan at the edge of it, blowing air into the garage.
Is that gonna be a noise problem? Again, I'm asking this question, but, um, you've, you've tried to answer that, I understand. I'm not sure how close your neighbors are across the street, or, I mean, you've shown us on both sides, and that's good. We really appreciate that. That helps out a whole lot.
Yes, ma'am. Um, this shouldn't be a noise complaint because when I have the garage door open, I really don't, I play music off my phone speaker and not through the speaker in the garage. And it's just barely loud enough for us to hear, and a shop fan really shouldn't be too loud. Um, that's another reason why I try to make my times in the noise, right, and like the noise ordinance. That way, it's not, if it, if by chance it does get a little noisy, then I'm still not causing too much of a hassle. I've already called my neighbors. And they've all signed the, a piece of paper that I did turn in to Josh, saying that they were fine with me doing this. And I explained to them everything, and they were all okay with it, including the neighbors on each side of my house.
Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, we are voting to recommend, uh, approval for this conditional use to the Board of Adjustments. Is that correct? Yes. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Pollard? Commissioner Pollard?
Yes. Sorry.
Commissioner Shramky?
No.
Commissioner Wade?
Aye.
Commissioner Ben Berry?
Aye.
Commissioner Morrison?
Aye.
Chair Crisillas?
Aye.
If there is no other business to come before the commission tonight, we stand adjourned at six oh six PM. Our next meeting will be April the fifth. Unless otherwise noted, it will once again be buzzing. Thank you all very much for being here tonight and look forward to seeing you again soon. Stay safe, all right?
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.